We will convene the April meeting of the State Board of Education. And in our tradition, we will start off with the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there members of the public that wish to be heard this morning? Yes, sir. Please step up. And for the record, just state your name and...
Ken Bayes, Director of the Vermont Principal Association. And I keep this very brief here. More important work to do than things I have to tell you here. This is my annual, I hope you can come to the Leadership Academy this year, talk, because we have really enjoyed. Sean Marie has come and Bill has come pretty often. And Eric Jensen is coming, talking about teaching and engaging with poverty in mind. It's a great lineup, as it has been for the past few years. We hope you can come. I'm going to pass this out. You know, one of the things I was saying to Krista during the break there was just about the ability of all of us to sort of stay on message and stay as positive as we can be. You know, we're educators. We need to stay positive. We're going to get creeped off. We're going to be pushed back. I know there's the hard reality out there. But the Principal Association and others, for sure, continue to say, despite all this, you know, we've got work to do. And so, our pledge is to say as positive as we can and to inform the conversation when people want principals to inform them. But I'd like to pass this out to you and hope that you can come. We certainly would be happy to have you as our guests, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And the date?
August 4th at 6:00.
4th, 5th, 6th.
Any other member of the public that wishes to be heard this morning?
Thanks.
Not? We will move on. I'm going to move the consent agenda to later in the day. We will now go to updates from board members.
May I, Mr. Perls? I think I mentioned the last time, the Up With Learning is going to be offering a, on the 29th, at 1:30 in room 11, a, to really look at student voice in Act 77, in the implementation of Act 77 with students. So if any, please, if you can make it, that'd be great.
What's the date?
29th, next week.
Is that the same day as the Holy Review? Yes.
Thursday?
It's this Thursday.
April 29th.
Oh, it may be, yeah.
29th is Wednesday.
I don't know what happened.
I know.
Any other announcements from board members? Yes, Sean Marie.
Well, I'm hoping Bill will do part of the NASB and I can do the other part. But did we do that yet? That was last month, right?
No, you're on.
Okay. So, the pre-NASB was about student data and privacy and principles. And this, I'm just going to pass, it took 12 of them. So, if Bill doesn't get one. And if Rebecca wants to pass this on to Peter or whomever, this is the... They had a lot of different speakers on, actually something that's near and dear to Krista's heart, about, you know, advertising and how the companies use data. And a lot of different companies have signed on to these quote "principles," not with an "A," but with an "LES." So, I just thought it would be of interest. The day was very informative. Lots of different people from different types of organizations, everything from lawyers to advocates to educators, talking about the privacy. And then, I'm going to turn it over to Bill, a little bit about the ESA reauthorization. And I'm sure Rebecca's going to speak to it and the NASB Legislative Conference.
Actually, let's cover that in Rebecca's part, where we get to the ESA reauthorization. And John Fisher was drifting around. He's been very influential in getting a lot of good things done on the reauthorization. Actually, I'm kind of optimistic about it.
I know. Yes. Could be good.
Any other announcements or comments from board members?
One quick thing. I just got back from American Educational Research Association. And the big thing I'd say about that meeting, which is some 15,000 researchers, is that this year, it was very much influenced by advocacy and protection of public schools. And they're, actually, as researchers who are pretty well removed from things, they were seeing what the problem was in terms of the lack of public support, the resegregation that's happening by the privatization movement, and also particularly charter schools and the neoliberal reforms. It's the first time I've seen them be that strong in terms of saying, you know, that this is a wrong situation that we have to work on.
Any other announcements from board members? Okay, move on. The only comment I have is that you may have noticed that, at the encouragement of the chancellor of the state college system, I wrote an article in support of, personally wrote an article in support of dual enrollment.
Saw that in the discussion.
I was being very careful, not, even though my title was mentioned, that I did not do that on behalf of the board, although I probably could have guessed you would have been supportive. But the timing of it was such that I wrote it as an individual. And I gather it's gotten some play in Vermont media. So, we, legislative update is next. Unless someone has something other to talk about, I think we'll put that off and maybe hopefully later in the agenda, we'll, we might have a draft of what's going to be presented on behalf of the board at the Senate Education Public Hearing tomorrow night.
Do you want to press anything?
Right.
That's what I was asking, did you know when to come back?
Yeah, maybe later this afternoon, when we have a, if we have a draft, we can alert you. And if you're available, that would be terrific.
Okay.
Okay? You're more than welcome to stay, though, if you find this entertaining.
I do, but I got something. But I pass later.
Move on to the secretary's report.
Um...
We'd like a full report on your vacation.
Well, actually, Steve, I didn't mention that, because I did bring you this. A little hot, so. When things get tough or you think I'm out of line, you can just sprinkle it on me. I feel like I owe you that after last week. The first thing I wanted you to just mention was ESA, and I think Bill already alluded to that.
Does that fit in?
Which is the Education, Elementary, Secondary and Education Act. And we are really happy that the U.S. Senate Health, Education, Labor and Pensions Committee passed out their draft of the bill, which we think represents a real step forward for Vermont. This bill is long overdue for reauthorization, as you know. What we're looking forward to is that the language really emphasizes the role of states, which are closer to schools, in trying to develop accountability systems that are really more appropriate to the local context. For the perspective of Vermont, the first and most immediate thing this would do is give us an opportunity to replace what we see as really indiscriminate sanctions against schools under no child left behind, and put in place a system that reflects Vermont's goals and our unique structure. It allows us to shift the conversation from measuring up in how well your students do against relatively arbitrary and untested standards, and towards focusing on continuous improvement. Are we seeing evidence that we're improving student learning, not just across the tested domains, but also across broader domains? And really see this as giving an opportunity for focusing the state around some of the work in education quality reviews and the education quality standards. It also gives us an opportunity to try to think, and for those of you who are choosing to come tomorrow, on Thursday, I really hope, some of you will participate in those education quality review conversations, to think not just about how we measure outcomes, but how we measure the opportunities to learn that we're providing with our kids. Because we know that so much of what our students demonstrate is a function of the opportunities we provide. And if we, if we believe that, we need to also be measuring the opportunities we provide our kids. It does not remove annual testing, though there is some opportunity there to think down the road about what annual testing is, and there may be some flexibility in that context. And it really does give us a little bit more freedom to build a system that's focused more on professional capital. Again, one of the things that we think is so promising about the education quality reviews is while test scores may tell you how your students measure, they don't tell you how to get better. And we're really hoping that the education quality reviews will help us think about how to get, get better as well. So this is exciting for us. We were pleased to also be able to hold on to the after-school money, the extended learning, the 21(c) money. We were very concerned because it was taken off the table at one point. I think it bears mentioning in public session that this is the only money that's distributed out to support this kind of opportunity to learn, particularly in high-need communities. The state doesn't support extended learning opportunities and it doesn't support after-school opportunities. And yet, we know that most of what we think of is that the achievement gap is developed in those out-of-school hours. So we are very pleased that still is in the bag, and we're still looking at ways to expand summer opportunities and after-school opportunities, particularly for elementary kids in high-poverty communities. And that has to be a priority. And it just, if you have a chance, to thank Senator Sanders, he was a lion on this one. He really was. And I would really, I think it would be worth passing on your thanks to him. I have heard from multiple delegations in other states that he played an absolutely pivotal role in really pushing through this, this new bill. So just any praise or thanks you can give to him for the tremendous role he played for Vermont, I encourage you to do so. Are there other things you wanted to add? It's not done. It still has to go to the House.
Right.
We're hoping that the administration will declare victory and move on. The opposition when we were in Washington seemed to be from the U.S. Department of Education and House Education.
Right.
So those are, those are the big hurdles. But the fact that this is such a well-supported unanimous compromise, I think, I think bodes well.
Yeah, I think that it stands a good chance, and I think the House will follow it. And I did get a chance to meet with the Democratic Leader of the Education Committee, Bobby Scott, and saw him out in Chicago. And I think that it has a good chance of going somewhere this time. And I do like the returning authority to the states, and I think it's going to give us a great deal of latitude when we start thinking about assessment and the implementation of EQS and so forth. It's the first good news I've heard in this area for 10 years.
Easily.
And one of the moments of introspection we've had is that we had to learn from the lesson. And just as we want some authority returned to the state, at the state level, we may need to think about returning some authority to the SUs, in terms of how we, we do some of this work. And that SUs may be better positioned to really evaluate and put the screws on at the local level if someone isn't doing what they need to do.
There's some tricky questions there. And from a state point of view, we need some things in common, but we don't need everything in common. If we do everything in common, we've basically centralized authority and power in one size fits all. So coming up with that mix of things, and also the orientation to opportunities to learn in measuring that, as opposed to just strictly sticking with outcomes, whether they be graduation rates, test scores, or what have you. We need to look at that in a completely different way, and I'm actually looking forward to the discussion.
And it's hard, these are hard conversations, because there is no one clear answer, and everything is a trade-off. So backing off from using all the measures means it may, you may have less of an impact. On the other hand, over-testing means nothing's important in terms of, you know, so there's a lot of, it'll be interesting. In terms of quality, it may be that public assurance and quality mean that we're setting a minimum bar, but we're trying to create opportunities and systems that push people to go beyond them. So it may be that that's your ticket to entry, rather than an indicator that you're really a high-performing system. These are, these are really powerful conversations that we'll have to have in the context of those EQRs.
Peter?
Well, just from the grandstand, it's, it's interesting to see, as a political confluence, how this is, I mean, just the politics of it.
Fascinating.
Fascinating. And maybe, I mean, there's examples of, some other legislation recently has been done that was unexpected on this front. And hopefully, this bodes well for something to actually happen.
We were lucky, because California was so closely aligned. And when California speaks, people listen. But it's, it was an interesting piece, because you had the bluest of the blue aligned with the reddest of the red, around really more state flexibility, sort of interesting bedfellows.
Yeah.
Sean Marie?
I'm just going to follow up with the fact that I went also to speak to, I guess Bernie, Bernie Sanders' education person, Chris Cohen. And he gave...
David.
David Cohen. He gave a lot of kudos and credit and accessibility to the, both you and John Fisher. And they had often reached out to Bill. And so, I really, I applaud the agency for always being able to communicate with, with them, because they did say they reached out quite a bit. The other thing that came to mind when I'm, Bill had, was meeting with somebody, and I was meeting with, okay, I'm getting old, senior moment, Senator, the Senator from Kentucky? He was saying that somebody asked a question, many of the NASB people are waiver states, and they asked a specific question about whether the waivers will continue, and the answer is no. They will be gone. And so, I felt some small satisfaction for Vermont, that we had gone down that path and back, and resisted the push many times to consider the waiver. And we were the only one of the NASB group of the states that, I mean, I just smiled because, of course, they were all going, oh, no, oh, no, you know. And so, I, again, you know, the foresight of actually going through the motions and then actually deciding it wasn't best was really, I think, appropriate.
I think that, that was interesting with the secretaries as well. The, the states that were most anxious were the ones who pushed through very, very tough waivers around, particularly around evaluation of teachers, and now won't have that waiver architecture to protect them anymore. They have to stand by the decision by themselves, and there's a lot of panicking going on. It's interesting.
Well, it seems like they should be happy if they had all the new authority within the state itself. It's no different.
It's a lot harder when you have to own your own choices, Bill. It's a lot harder. You actually have to have courage.
Well, yeah.
So, I'll keep us moving, because I know you like brevity. Just, I wanted to give you the heads up that we, we have been meeting with the governor and working, and working quite closely with our counterparts at AHS to try to begin to look at ways to move this conversation around full-service schools. And we hope to have some ability to, to come back and share that with you, some of this point. And just really pleased by the spirit of collaboration that both agencies are bringing to that, and realizing that this is a common priority. So, wanted to give you that.
Can I ask on that front, has there been any discussion about reinstituting the community rating system?
Not that I'm aware of, but I can ask.
I thought that was a really, you know about that? I mean...
Yeah, I do, from years ago. And then, the last piece, one of the things that you know is that Vermont has been sort of at the forefront nationally on personalization of learning and proficiency-based learning and some of our career readiness work. And the downside of being good is that sometimes people get noticed. And I, some of you have already heard, but I did want to make sure all of you had heard, that John Fisher, as a result of his national involvement through the agency work, has been asked to take a position at the Gates Foundation related to personalization of learning and career readiness. And he will be leaving the agency at the end of the month. So, while we're absolutely thrilled for him, it's a wonderful opportunity for him. We don't know why he wants to move to DC. But, you know, it's, he'll be leaving the agency, and it's a loss for us, and we'll be making plans for moving.
Sure will be.
One of the previous deputies is also working there now.
Rayanne was the one who recruited him.
I figured as much the minute you said it.
They were a tag team.
Yes, they were. There you go.
Any other questions of Rebecca? Yes?
I have a quick question. I was just following up with some other teachers and just talking about ESPEC and how it was rolling out. And something that came up that I didn't even think of before, so some, one teacher has talked to, their school is giving the test on iPads, because that was the, when they got computers, they went for iPads, and finding it difficult to use some of the functions for the ESPEC tests on the iPad. I was just wondering, are we collecting data as a state on which schools are using iPads, which ones are using laptops? Are we collecting data of kids that are in a one-to-one environment, those that are not? So I'm just wondering if we're collecting sort of that side data, which then we can look at some of the results with.
I think that we've done tech readiness surveys that tell us what people have and what they're using. It could be put together to do that kind of analysis. We're actually talking with several folks around possible research and evaluation using some of the ESPEC data, and that could be one of the issues that we look at. We're assuming that there'll be a tremendous amount of noise in this smarter balance course, which is part of why we've been messaging the way we've been messaging. Oh, which reminds me of one more thing I need to update you on, but as John walks in. But the, the, we just, we just need to take a year or two and see how these scores settle out.
Okay.
And we may be in a whole new, our hope is that we'll be in a whole new ESA reauthorization scheme. So one of the things that I need to update you on is what we've done in response to your resolution. But, but we're going to be, we could be in a whole different place in a year anyway. But there's no question, I mean, systems that have more access to technology, part of the lift for them will be familiarity with technology. That's true.
Although, maybe not.
Maybe. It depends how, it depends, it depends, I mean, a lot of it's the adult functionality, it's not the kid functionality. I have to be clear, the kids are more functional in general, is our perception, than the adults. But whether the staff are able to set it up, organize and do the logistics is a challenge.
In a calm way. Like it not be stressed, like it not translate that.
Right. We find that often the adults are more stressed out than the kids are. And we find that once the testing starts, kids actually are reporting. And we've had some lovely anecdotes, where kids leave the test and then talk for two hours about the math problem. I mean, they're not as stressed as the adults are. It's, it's the adults, to be honest.
Yeah, it's so funny you mention that. A lot of my friends who are juniors just finished several weeks of doing test prep for the ESPEC. And they would just sort of poke fun at it by being like, oh, now's the time when the adults are going to teach us how to use the computers.
Which is actually funny, because there is not a lot of research that suggests that that much test prep actually helps you on the test. So you just need to know what the system is.
Yep.
So, John, do you want to update on the Chisholm letter that we wrote? The memo? Just in terms of, the state board had made a, passed a resolution about the appropriate use, and from that, we then went and took action.
Right. We haven't heard back. Sorry there, John. Just for the record, introduce yourself.
John Fisher, one of the deputy secretaries here at the agency. We haven't heard back from the Chisholm letter, but basically what it allowed us to do is to set aside further progress, moving schools into the deeper forms of school improvement that are currently required under, under the no child left behind. There are progressions and models that are prescribed by the federal law. We expect that we will get approved, because this was an offer from them, and we didn't stray outside of the guidelines of that. So what it would mean is that we would still do the determinations. We would not move any school deeper into a further improvement cycle. We would encourage them, because of EQS, not NCLB, to continue with their continuous improvement plan and do all the good things that, that happened regardless of that. And I think it will be a very muted response or, or reporting in August of whatever determinations we do. They will not advance anybody. It'll be the first year of smarter balance results, so we will have no benchmarking, nothing to compare it to. There's no concordance with, with kneecap, previous test scores or any of that. So it'll be basically year one of, of a new assessment system, and schools continue to do. I think EQS will be the guiding policy in this interim period. And we will get two years of data, so we would not have to do an AYP or whatever in, in the future, ESA would be called. AYP is eliminated into the current bill, and a state accountability system would develop. So I think it really is waiting for a new legislation to come in and, and to create an accountability system in the interim if, if they pass out of the House and Senate and go to full vote.
And coincidentally, we had, we ran a ESPEC testing session yesterday for members of the legislature and the media. Despite pretty broad invitations, we had one member of the legislature show up, we had one journalist show up who left half-day, and we had Rick Riordan and Scott Giles of VSAC show up. So we had four, three people who completed the test, and I think had a really interesting conversation, including with the news, yesterday. And we will be able to get scores for the three who completed the test, not for the media person. But the purpose was to, I, well, I'm amused. It's funny how we will do two children things that we won't do to ourselves. I just have to concern.
That's okay.
But, but we're hoping that that will, and I really have to hand it to Dave Sharp, who was there. And we're hoping that they will help leaven the conversation about what these scores actually do and don't tell us when they come out.
Thank you, John. Anything else, Rebecca?
I'm done. Of course. I was just...
Sorry, Stacy?
No, just was going to add, I thought it was incredibly helpful to have Rebecca your letter and to have our statement. And I was amazed, I mean, you think the, we were talking about the teachers being anxious. I think there are a lot of, I heard a lot of parents being anxious, what, parents asking, what am I supposed to be doing at home to help my child get ready? I said, oh, my goodness. Where, like, so, it was very helpful to send that, you know, be able to send it out, send it out to the Burlington School Principals and to the school board, and just be able to part, was, was able to be a part of a conversation in a way that I would not have had the documentation sent. It was super helpful. Your letter was great.
And your credit to you for the statement, which was put together in short notice.
Christian?
And Rebecca, speaking of getting them, I, as a teacher, I got my first memo from you ever.
Oh.
So it was printed out for everybody on mandatory reporting. And so, me, I just wanted to let everybody know that teachers all got that. At least, very rarely do I see things trickle down at the teacher level. And I'm just wondering what prompted that one? It was just, it was going over what exactly you are as a mandatory reporter, just almost as a reminder of going through and looking at the requirements for being mandatory reporter. And, but it was, it made it. So I just wanted to let you know.
That's good. I mean, I think, I think part of it was, you know, particularly in a state with a lot of turnover, we realized that people don't know the full domains of their job. And certainly, there was a bill going through the legislature, which was related. And we just felt it made sense to just remind people what your responsibilities are. And, you know, as a teacher, if you see something and you don't report, you are subject to sanctions. So we wanted to make sure everyone knew that as well.
And that is actually very helpful.
All right, let's, let's move on. We'll move on to item H. Karen, you want to give us an update on the pre-K rulemaking, please?
Karen Edwards, Department of Education. We're all set with the Secretary of State. And there are, the hearing is set for May 20th, from 5:00 to 7:30. I emailed this to Perry, so if anyone wants it, he can send it to you. We have sites in Montpelier, Bennington, Middlebury, Newport, Williston, Springfield, Lyndenville, and White River Junction. So we tried to cover the state pretty well. We'll have a staff member at every site, and we asked for the larger rooms, where there were larger rooms, although I don't know how many people will be there. We'll see. And there'll be a, we're working on an email address to submit written comments. At this point, people kind of submit them to whoever they know, so we're trying to get that a little more centralized. So that's where we are.
And do, I probably ask you this each meeting, do those rules at some point come back to us?
They do.
And that's the last stage in the process?
Well, there's one more step going back to the L-CAR.
And so, when, when would we take the final action, then?
I'm thinking it's probably going to be, you don't meet in August, right? Or you do meet?
Don't meet July.
Don't meet July.
You don't meet July. So it will be either August or September.
Okay. Any questions? Yes?
Yes. Karen, thank you for that date. And I, and I also realize that you, you also know that that fell on the same time that superintendents and board members and folks are following, are meeting at Lake Maury for a conference. So you set up a time to meet with the Vermont special, the Vermont Council Special Educators? Is that proper?
Yeah, and we opened up the White River Junction site at their request.
Oh, great. Are you meeting with that group at all, separate from that?
They generally submit a written comment. So I'm expecting that they'll do that again. And Cindy Moran, the State Director of Special Education, meets with them every month.
Right.
So she, you know, she has an opportunity to hear from them. So I think we've, I think we've given them...
So you feel pretty, pretty confident that there's good representation? Because I, I mean, one of the things that I, as a, as a school board member, is I defer to my, the leadership, you know, whether it's the superintendent or the director of special ed. And, and I, I think as a state board, you know, we're, we're deferring to the, the agency. And I just wonder how much the agency and that group are, are really agreeing on, on the rulemaking outcomes. I suppose a great way to put it.
Yeah, we work closely with their executive board, and I have been to one of the executive board meetings several months ago to share, you know, hear their concerns and, you know, share what we know. The issue for specialized administrators is, you know, what is their responsibility? And we've gotten, you know, very clear opinion from the Office of Special Education Programs that they have no responsibility outside of their geographic boundaries. They can choose to serve children outside of their geographic boundaries, but their responsibility is for that, for those children. We have also reached out to the Office of Civil Rights in Boston because if, you know, if there's not a special education responsibility, there is probably a Section 504 responsibility. But there really aren't any models of how other states do that. So we've been back and forth with OCR to try to get some clarity and direction for that part of it.
And one of the, one of the things that has come up in talking about this issue in our community is the oversight of conflict, placement, age and so forth. Is that going to be a responsibility of the local SUs? Or will that be the responsibility of the Agency of Education to find a resolution to dispute?
There are several processes in place to provide either the LEAs or the parents' assistance when there's conflict. There are due process complaints, there is mediation, and there are due process hearings. And as a state, most of those conflicts end up in mediation in Vermont. There are very few hearings, due process hearings, and not very many complaints.
And where does that, does that go through the LEA, or if you're a parent?
If, if you're not able to resolve a conflict locally, either, either.
So it initially starts with the LEA?
Yeah, you'd want it to be resolved there, if it could be.
Here.
When you talked about the district or the area that the tuitioning students go beyond, they're still covered, right? By the host district?
Yes. Yep. Yeah, pretty much in the IDEA, the home LEA retains responsibility for students.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, Karen.
We have been requested by the Agency of Education to have a brief executive session. So I'll turn to Peter for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I would request that we go into executive session to receive confidential attorney-client communications made for the purpose of providing professional legal services to the State Board of Education.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Bonnie, any discussion? Not all those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. The ayes have it, and we're in executive session. Okay. We're back in open session at the State Board of Education on April 21st. The next item agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Second.
Been moved and seconded by, moved by Bill, seconded by Sean Marie, any discussion?
I just want, I just want to make sure that we're voting on the amended consent agenda, which only has two under renewal. Is that correct? Because the.
I believe that's correct.
And I have one addition to the minutes. I'm wondering, Perry, if you might, on the website, when you post the minutes, post the resolution for Margaret? Because it just, it doesn't have the actual wording, but if you could just add it on, if it's the board's pleasure.
Just as a matter of clarification, you said two renewals, but we have two straight-out renewals, general education, one general, and special education.
I was under.
We're looking at this one.
You meant under two.
I was, so A is gone, I'm just looking at two.
Right.
There's B and C, they weren't renewed.
Well, just as the consent, okay, just as long as there's clarity.
Actually, the full text of the Margaret resolution is on page six of the February.
It is. Oh, sorry, Mike, because I didn't go scroll down far enough.
All right, so we have a motion to adopt the consent agenda. And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed say no. The ayes have it, and we've adopted the consent agenda. We will break for lunch, and we will resume the meeting at 12:45. Lunch is behind us here. Board of the, we're the Board of Education.
Oh, yeah.
And we will, we're going to agenda item I, Educational Quality Review Update, from, with Amy Fowler.
Yeah, hi. I'm going to present, so anyone who has their back to the screen, if you want to move, I want to give you a chance and.
Just flip around.
Or just flip around, whatever makes you comfortable.
I think I can do it.
All right, so, good afternoon, it's nice to be in warm weather-ish. Ish, not as nice as Sunday. All right, I'm going to take us through the objectives of our time together and then dive straight into letting you know where we are with education quality reviews right now. So our overall objective at the agency is that we would be able to have a beta implementation of the education quality reviews for somewhere between 20, approximately 20 supervisory unions or supervisory districts, starting in the fall, over the course of the whole year. Not in the fall would we do 20, but over the course of the year, we'd be implementing these reviews with approximately 20 of them. And our objectives today is that I want to give you an overview of the current processes we're using to define what the education quality reviews are within the agency, and also give you an overview of the knowns and unknowns related to the education quality reviews. I think it's very important that you not leave today believing that this is already decided, we are in the process of developing. And then also give you an overview of our intended implementation plan. So that's the big picture of where we're headed for today. So one of the things that I think is important for you to know is we are utilizing a framework called the Rapid Decision Making Framework. It comes from the Bridge Span Group. And this is intended as an opportunity to clarify where people are involved in the process. I'm not going to go in great detail over this, but basically, I'm the recommender of the work, which means I'm largely the agency nag related to everything, education quality review. It means I can't drop the ball, I've got to keep the work going, even though everyone is tasked with a million other things, and trust me, they are. The agree-to or approver, that would be the LTM, and actually, the State Board of Education will play a role in this. It's where we bring to you what we think we're going to do. And you predict what are the foreseeable risks and where we might mitigate those risks. Performers and input are almost always the same team. This is the field and the agency staff members who will carry out the work in the future. And if you don't build from their input, you often develop something that is really badly designed. And then the decider is going to be Rebecca on the details of how we do the education quality reviews. She's the one who will ultimately take the recommendations that I bring forward to make a decision. And again, this comes from the Bridge Span Group, it's an excellent framework for decision-making. I like it. So we're using it. So for the input mechanisms. There you go. For input mechanisms, we have two different ways that we've been approaching this. So in the agency, we've been working since almost the beginning of the year, not quite. But we meet about every two to three weeks for 90-minute increments, and we get input from across the agency. Directors were asked to tell us who were their key players, the people who could give the most in terms of performance work. But also towards an I for being lean. And not because we didn't want input from everyone, but because there is so much work that has to be done, we didn't want to overdo it for input. This is a cross-functional team, and the best, most robust conversations are happening as different teams within the agency are saying, well, yes, but if you do that, then this is how my team will be affected, or this is how this other thing will happen. So they're having these very robust conversations. So we do that about every two to three weeks. For the field, we advertise this in a variety of mechanisms, ask if people could come to our two meetings, April 23rd and May 29th. The first one is on Thursday. We had nearly 80 applicants, and we accepted 45. Now people, it may end up being closer to 40 in the end. Every county was represented initially, but now Grand Isle is no longer represented because their person had to drop. But for every role except for students, we know that we have a representative. The students, we haven't gotten confirmation from the students we selected. I think one other thing that you would be interested to know here is that we specifically reserved a third of the spaces to be for people from the public who have no direct affiliation as employees or advisors on education issues. So they might be a parent, they might be a community activist, they might be a taxpayer, they could be a mayor, but they cannot have worked in a school, they can't have that affiliation. So two-thirds will have some affiliation to a school, and one-third will not. And that happens on Thursday. So, what do we know? Well, what we know is that the education quality reviews will be driven by education quality standards. They're looking at what we expect of good schools, not what the United States Department of Education says is good. So the old way of accountability had been a focus on No Child Left Behind metrics and what the federal government defined. The new way is what we in Vermont say constitutes a good school. We're going to continue the approach we've taken, that it's part of a continuous cycle of improvement. And we know that we're going to measure in two ways. One way is through an annual snapshot review, and the second is through an integrated field review. And I'm going to spend a bit more time on those in just a minute. What we don't know, the list is very long, I just put up a few questions. So, as you're aware, ESEA is under reauthorization. How that comes out of the federal government and how it will intersect with what we do here, we don't know yet. We're going to have to figure that out. We also don't know exactly how this will link into accountability or corrective actions, because we want the focus to be on every school getting better every year. How do we know when the school's just not making enough progress? The exact way we'll do that, we don't know yet. We're going to figure it out before we're done. And lastly, how will we integrate the annual snapshot and the integrated field review? So for the annual snapshot, and I'm going to show you a sample in just a moment, that is not real data, but I'm going to show you a sample. So we do know for certain that 100% of all of the supervisory unions and the supervisory districts will receive feedback every single year. We know we can do that because they have the appropriate size for reporting data in ways that are reliable and valid. We know that it will intersect explicitly with the longitudinal data system that's coming online next year so that schools will not have the burden of double entry of data. As they do their work in the schools, that data will filter up and will be available with minimal impact to them. The data will be published by the AOE on five key components, and all of these you should see coming straight out of the education quality standards. So one big bucket will be around achievement indicators, a second around personalized learning. The third, I hate when I have a typo, the third that should say high-quality staffing, pretend like you don't see that. The fourth is around safety and school climate. And the fifth is around financial indicators related to financial efficiency. And then those results will improve our improvement plans. What we don't know yet is exactly which indicators make each of those buckets. That's part of what our field input is for, and what our AOE input is, is to help us discover what constitutes good enough, and I'll show you a sample so you'll know, exactly how the data will be published, what it looks like, the format, and how we're going to integrate them. And then the last question's really a tricky one. Some people are arguing, I really want to know exactly what the indicators are, and those are the indicators for the next 10 years, and we can never make a change. Because we've got to tell people what they're going to be held accountable for. And other people on the other side are saying, yeah, but over time, we're going to change our definitions or what we know is good, and we should be able to change over time. And obviously, we're going to have to make a decision, and both of those groups aren't going to be able to have their way. So this is a fake annual snapshot. And I just want to make sure everyone's aware that this has no bearing in reality, it is totally made up, and it is completely fake, and it is for conversation purposes only. The only part of this that is real is that when you would go to a supervisory union launch page, you would in fact see these five categories. Those would show up. The rest of this is all make-believe right now. Okay, so, when you're on, you would see some kind of a score that comes from a scale, and I don't know what that is yet, but we're going to know. You also would see something that gives you a comparison over time. And right now, we're leaning towards two years, largely because of the ease of reporting that data. And then finally, there's some kind of assessment. Now, in this stylized example that is completely fake, what we would know is that for this SU or supervisory district, they're doing really well on academic achievement and high-quality staffing. They have four out of five dots filled in, they're green, it tells us it's good. We don't know exactly what the metrics are underneath it, but we can see that. But we're a little bit worried for this SU on financial efficiencies and personalized learning, but the safe school climate looks okay. So that's what this page would be, it would be a launch. Now, you also have to imagine that there's a place to drop down to the individual schools within that SU. As we drop down to those schools, if the school is large enough, you would see the same data, but for just that school. If the school isn't large enough, you'd see blank spaces, okay? But it would launch at the SU level. Now, if I was interested in knowing how these scores came together, I would click on the thing I was interested. So let's say I was interested in safe school climate. Then what it would do is, and again, this is totally fake and not real, here are four different indicators that we might use as safe school climate. It would give us that raw score again, a comparison over time, and then the assessment of how they're doing on that particular indicator. So this school system, the supervisory union, it was kind of average in its performance on safe and school climate. But when it looks here, it can actually see that its truancy rate has been increasing over the last two years. It's not doing super well on that, and that would be the one place they would leverage their time and attention. Okay, so that's the annual snapshot. We don't have this all the way fleshed out yet. On Thursday, our field is going to give us a lot of suggestions about what they'd like to see as the indicators in these buckets. And then we'll get into design choices later. But right now, we're talking about what to measure, not what colors we're using. The next part is the integrated field review. And actually, I think the integrated field review is the part that when I talk to people, they're pretty excited about it. Here we know that the SUs and the supervisory districts, they're not going to get feedback every year. This is a time-intensive, resource-intensive prospect. We're looking at being able to do approximately 20 to 23 SUs or SDs a year, which means it would take a three-year cycle. That, of course, is all conditional on there being the funding resources to carry that out on that cycle. The reports would be published and available on the website, and they actually, we've, since we're not quite here yet, but we believe that we'll be looking surfacely at all of the indicator areas, but then going deep into a couple of areas. Again, the results would inform improvement plans, and we know that the teams will include some number of people from the AOE with expertise in the areas we're looking at, as well as peer reviewers from the other supervisory unions and supervisory districts that are having their review in that same year. Now, what we don't know, the actual logistics, and this is where the dollars come into play. The bigger the committee, the longer the visit, that increases the cost. What's the right amount to do in order to get the data we need without being too expensive? The next part is exactly how structured or unstructured will those visits be? Will they or won't they intersect with other accreditation work? Obviously, from a school perspective, they'd really like them to intersect. How we make that happen is another question. How we're going to train people to participate in these reviews, we're not going to just take someone, say, oh, tomorrow you're going to a review. We're going to have to invest in them to make sure that everyone's available to do the work. And then the last question is, not all supervisory unions and supervisory districts will require the same kind of visit. Do some schools, maybe, systems get a more intensive visit, maybe it's a three-day visit? I don't know, I'm making that up. And others have a one-day visit? Is it the size of the group that matters, how many schools get visited? Whether we see, do we go see a school board meeting in every SU or not? These are questions that are left not yet answered. So, what's our implementation plan? Well, we're hoping by spring of 2015, which, maybe we should say the end of spring 2015, that we would actually have something to react to, a beta draft. We are going to be crafting documentation and crafting the mockups of the snapshots over summer. We're very fortunate, the governor's office worked with us and is providing an intern, a summer intern for the entire summer dedicated to just this work from the Kennedy School. They get one each year, and they get to decide which department or agency, and we got lucky. And then, we hope that in the fall, we'll pilot the first version with two to four SUs and supervisory districts. And then after that, we'll get feedback from those initial pilots. And they'll tell us, you know, how should we improve it? And then we'll do it again, 1.1 with another five to eight. We'll refine it again until we have 1.2, so that version 2.0 is ready to go out for the 2016-17 school year. So we're actually planning that our first rollout will not be perfect, we're not shooting for an A in the first rollout. We're shooting for something that we're okay, getting lots of feedback for how to make it better, and then we'll make it better. And I think that is it. So now, if there are any questions, I can take them. I did my timing pretty well.
What's on your team? When you talk about team, how many people are we talking to?
For the agency input team? How many people are in the agency input team? Nobody's ever, we don't, never have 100% attendance, because it's so hard to schedule. But I'd say there's 35 to 36 people who are invited. Probably on any given meeting day, we have about 20 to 25 that come within the agency. And then the field team is going to be about 42, I think. And some members of the board are, are members of that group that signed up.
Could you expand on the relationship of the school improvement plan with this thing, which is SU or SD UI?
So I can expand where I know now, but I don't think we know exactly, because this is a big question left to be tackled. So currently, schools write their continuous improvement plans at the school level, and then they bring those up through the supervisory union, and we intersect with them. And that's actually something that John, Tom, and Karen's teams do the lion's share of that work. Figuring-
What's the current status of those plans? Is it mostly in disarray, or is it moving along, or what do we know?
The plans that I've seen copies of have been quite well done. That would be what I would say. Do you guys have anything you want to chime in on that?
Schools have been writing pretty good plans through the AYP context.
Okay.
And what we're trying to do is to phase in the transition to the continuous improvement plans as schools are required to write new plans. And that's moving along pretty well. The first group were doing that this year. There are also some schools that are, even though they're not required to convert to the continuous improvement plan just yet, they've decided to do so, because it's also a way for them to collapse several planning processes into one. So it's moving forward pretty well, but the intention was to phase it in over a couple of years.
And so the dilemma, I think the question that you're raising is, if the data first is at the supervisory union level, how does a school create their school improvement plan, their continuous improvement plan? If the data is first at the supervisory level, am I understanding the question?
That's part of it. That's to be developed, but you're a natural organizational and geographic unit as a school, and by aggregating to the district-wide level, you increase your end, but at the same time, you lose specificity in terms of the direction you get from it.
Right. So that's absolutely the trade-off that we're making. And the choice that we made coming into this is that as an agency, we want to know that whatever plans we put into effect, we can carry out for 100% of the organizations we're working with. If we report at the school level, we'll be suppressing data on so many schools that we would go in knowing we could only deliver the, whatever, whatever comes out in the end, which is not completely decided, but whatever that is, we would go in knowing we could only deliver that for a subset of the schools across the state. So we've, we've started by saying, "We're going to work at the SU, SD level," knowing that it has that very drawback that you've pointed out, and then figuring out how to best cope with that, but knowing that we can interact at 100% fidelity. So that is a choice that we made, and it's a trade-off.
It's not a bad trade-off, though. I mean, in terms of if you have your, your SD or SUs are responsible, they still are accountable for what happens at the school level.
Correct.
And also-
Correct.
-move out of that place of having schools act like little SUs or SDs, depending on where you live.
Yeah. I think I would honor that what you've said is exactly true, and it's the choice that we've made, and simultaneously know that there are communities will feel, "Well, I don't have an allegiance or an identity with my SU or SD right now," and so this will be a source of frustration. So I think, one of the other things I'd like to convey to the board is that we are very well aware that as we make decisions, we will not make decisions that everyone is happy with, so we're making decisions that we think we can sustain for the long term. Are there questions?
Thank you very much. Sounds like you're on top of it.
We're working on it. Did you have another one? You start-
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll be here Thursday.
Okay. You'll hear from him on Thursday. Okay. Is this available? Harry, is it available?
I can sure set up.
It can be. Okay. Yeah, that would be great.
I'd so love that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay. John, you're up next. Efficiency-based learning update from John Fisher. Now, before we get started on this, we learned this morning, Mr. Fisher, that you're leaving the agency. Well, I want to start this off by thanking you for your years of dedication and professionalism. We haven't seen you here recently a lot before the State Board of Education, but I think I can speak for the full board that we truly appreciate all you've done for education in the state of Lebanon.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you. I've been keeping out of trouble, that's why you haven't seen me. Well, we're bringing it up, we wanted to tie all this back to the education quality standards that you passed in March or April of 2014. Very comprehensive rewrite of the older school quality standards that are, that are really-
Glad you're going for me. To your rights.
We're going to pull you up.
Great, thank you.
That are really designed on equity and access for all students, and reinforced the Act 77, flexible pathways work that the legislature passed and worked with the State Board on as well. So to give you an idea of what we've been doing since that was passed, these are some of the, not all of the elements, but these are the high-leverage point elements of EQS that we, in talking with the educators in the field, really said, "We could really use some help, some guidance, some support, some planning time. Give us a space that we can really figure out what this, what this looks like and help us develop some models and pilots and things like that." So you see, the, these were the high-leverage pieces. Certainly, flexible pathways was reinforced here from Act 77. Personal learning plans, again, appearing in Act 77, but once, once the law was passed, there was a lot to unpack with what a personal learning plan looked like, how it would be implemented. Less about what the plans look like and more about what's the process that students engage in with the adults in their, in their lives, in their educational lives and their personal lives. Certainly, curriculum graduation, local graduation requirements had to address in EQS. Moving to a proficiency-based system and moving away from a time-based system. When you unpack that, there's all kinds of questions and capacity issues. Tiered systems of support, something that Karen Edwards here took, took the lead on with the SWIFT Center project. And as you go through here, you've heard about the continuous improvement plan, the secretary's recommendations, which include the, the education quality review that Amy Fowler just told us about. And that last part is really where, whatever federal policy is passed, that's where we hope to create alignment to a state accountability system. In the current ESEA version, moves all of that to a state level. We have five this year. The academic content areas weigh in heavily here, again, to move beyond the potential for narrowing the curriculum because of the, the previous test-based accountability systems.
Is arts missing, or any?
Art, we have, we've touched on a little bit, but we're at a disadvantage. We don't have an arts content person here.
Okay.
So we, but arts have been, we've engaged the-
Art council?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Proficiency-based graduation requirements. It's, it's a significant change from how students attain the graduation endpoint. And what does that look like? And I mentioned, and Karen can speak towards the multi-tiered support systems and the SWIFT Center pilots. So there's a lot of total alignment between the initiatives that we've been in the back rooms and out in the field doing with EQS, and they're very deliberately put in place to support that.
The graduation requirements, is that expected to be uniform for the state?
EQS provides that the high school board must pass a proficiency-based graduation policy. So it is at the local level, but it must align to the, the elements within EQS in terms of the standards set by the State Board, the demonstration of proficiency through numerous methodologies, things like that. That's actually, I think, in the May session, yeah, Tom's-
I'll speak more to that also.
Okay, thank you. Next slide. So as we, last November, we launched a seven-month professional development series, invited supervisory unions to submit teams and receive grant funding from the agency to participate in the seven-month-long, two days per month, in-person meetings, dealing with the roadmap you saw on the previous slide of how do we implement proficiency-based systems. In between those in-person monthly meetings, which by the way, occur simultaneously in three different areas of the state, about 30 teams engaged in this, and in between those in-person meetings, we provide webinars and virtual coaching before and after each of the in-person meetings. They are all geared towards EQS and proficiency-based or PBL implementation. All participants are developing a three-year implementation plan for their SU-wide team, which also includes principals from at least an elementary school, middle school, and high school in ESU or SD, and in some cases have students on them. In one case, I think, has a school board member on them. Each member participating will develop a professional or personal learning plan. So as, as we go through this series since November, we've been modeling the behaviors of a proficiency-based system and a personalized system. We have about 30 teams from SUs and SDs. We also have a team from CTE centers. We have a team from adult educator, adult education providers in the state, and we have a team from the Agency of Education. So it is an internal, external adventure that we've been on, where the agency staff have been contributing and learning about proficiency-based implementation and contributing from their areas of expertise. And at the same time, will be able to tell us in a three-year implementation plan for the agency more about, over the next three years, where, where does the agency need to modify our supports, our capacities, our offerings, and our systems internally here in the agency, and then spread that across the other employees who are not able to make these meetings as well. I want to pause for a minute here, and then Tom's going to pick up, and I just want to introduce everybody here. Kendra Rickerby here is on the ISL team, the high school team, and specializes and supports the agency team in this with a group that debriefs before, after, and before each in-person meeting with the agency team, because when we go out in the field for those seven month meetings, where the agency team is as well split across three, she facilitates and brings that agency group together with Tom and Karen to really debrief, and what did we learn, and what do we need to look at internally. Karen Edwards, director of the pre-K to middle school division of ISL. Tom Alderman, secondary and adult division, and Chris Case, a project manager in my office working with the performance assessments. And I will hand it off to Tom next.
Thank you. Let me just say a little bit more about the PBL series. Probably, as John mentioned, more than half of the SUs-
You can back it up to the-
-participating, and it is our sincere hope that we will be able to continue to work with that first cohort in this coming year to move that work forward, and to bring in the rest of the SUs that didn't participate this time. But that, of course, dependent upon funding. But it's been very well received. I think the model has worked, so we're very happy about that. I'll just also mention that I think coming out of that experience, a couple of things I've learned in terms of the challenges for schools and districts, the transition to a grading policy that works in a proficiency-based system is one of them. Another is understanding how to place value on all those learning experiences that are outside of the traditional classroom course-based experience, because that's necessary if we're truly going to have a flexible environment. So one of the expectations in EQS is for a local comprehensive assessment system in combination with the state-level assessment system. Rebecca, did you mention the testing that happened yesterday?
I did, briefly.
Okay. So, you know, that's part of our effort to convey the appropriate use of that state-level assessment system, smarter balance. And that's going to be in combination with what's happening at the local level. This is language from EQS around that. So we hope that there is a combination of more traditional kinds of assessments, but a lot of performance-based assessment. And Chris can help us talk about that a little bit more in terms of what we're trying to do at the state level to provide performance-based assessment models tied to the transferable skills as a way of helping our schools and districts understand how to do that work well, and do it in a way that is comparable, has a little bit of validity that we can look across the state to. I'll just mention that one of those bullets informs PLPs and informs instruction, those last three, informs instruction, professional learning, and informs the continuous improvement plan. Absolutely, we want to make sure that the results of student assessment are being considered and a part of that process for not only designing what each student is doing, but designing what the school and the district are trying to do to improve.
I have to provide just a bit of context to make this make sense to you, that in Tom and my division, we have content specialists, elementary and secondary for most areas in English language arts, mathematics, science, health, and physical education. And they've all been focused in some way on the comprehensive assessment system. One of the realizations that they've come to in their work over the last few years, and it certainly hit me a number of years ago when I sent a survey out when we were working on a potential waiver, is that there is not a great deal of understanding about assessment in the field, you know, what, what the purposes of assessment are, what the appropriate uses of assessment are. So a lot of the work that the content specialists have done in the last few years has been kind of getting at that basic understanding of what would be in a balanced and comprehensive assessment system. They've also focused very much on performance assessments, which is something that PE and health consultants have done for years. So in science, and each of these groups has what's called a professional learning team, and these are educators from the field who work with them in developing materials and trainings. So science took the approach of developing learning progressions to help people understand what you have to do to get to meeting a standard, and at a more detailed level, instructional sequences that align with those progressions. And every one of those instructional sequences begins and ends with a performance assessment. So they have shared these now, and they call them regional science seminars. So they've done seven regional science seminars in the past year to share this information. They're also working with the Great Schools Partnership to create the moderated science performance task that's connected with one of the transferable skills, and I think Chris is going to talk a little bit more about that. The English language arts group has worked really hard this year creating guidelines for building and evaluating comprehensive and balanced assessment system. This is really a primer in assessment literacy. It talks about types of assessment, uses of each of those types of assessment, some kind of tips for, for building your assessment system. And they've also reviewed a great many of the more commonly-used assessments to say, "Okay, this is where this is appropriately used, and this is what, this is what it does, this is what it doesn't do." They've also, they've also, for the last two years, created a curriculum-embedded performance assessments that they've shared at regional meetings. And for next year, they've planned a series of professional learning experiences for coaches, coaches and teacher leaders on formative assessment process and practices in English language arts. And they have focused their, their professional development for the field on people who are recognized within schools as leaders in English language arts, or who are English language arts coaches. And they've surveyed and identified that group and, you know, really reached out to them, because they see them as a leverage point in making difference in, in the local assessments. Math has taken yet a different, different approach, and they have, what they've done in a series, they're, they call these mathematics rounds, regional mathematics rounds, and they've focused on this idea of a great task. What does a great task in mathematics look like? And I can read you the characteristics if you're interested. But basically, those great- But basically, those great tasks are again, begin and end with a performance assessment. And they've also, they've also worked with Great Schools Partnership on the performance task that Chris will tell you about. So it's been, you know, a real focus on building the foundational understanding to have a really functional local assessment system and a focus because of the shift in thinking that comes along with the education qualities, quality standards to performance assessment. What is that, what does that look like? How do you embed that into the day-to-day instruction that happens in classrooms?
So we hope that this work at the state level around performance assessment tied to the transferable skills will become a nutrical part of the local comprehensive assessment system. So Chris can say a little bit more about that.
So I'll talk to you for a little while about the work of the Vermont Transferable Skills Assessment System. And this is, I'll give you a little bit about what the project is, and then also tell you kind of where it is and its progress. It's something that we've been working on for the last, oh, I'd say, seven or eight months, it's the middle of 2014, and that is expected to continue with the support of the Great Schools Partnership in Maine through 2016, 17. And then I think that we're anticipating as an agency that we're going to continue to support after that as needed. This work springs from the transferable skills, or the need rather, to assess transferable skills. That comes from EQS, and so I think what we were trying to do as a function of the system ultimately is to provide schools with a set of optional resources that they can use to, at the classroom level and the school level and at the SU level, to assess student proficiency in those transferable skills, and then also to give educators who may want to develop their own versions of assessments and scoring rubrics, samples of what those could look like. So that we're still giving people freedom to develop their own resources at the local level, but we do want to be able to give them some really good exemplars and some good guidance on what those things could look like. So the work that's been done so far, and that's kind of going on now, is very heavily involving educators in the state. I think that we're seeing this as a real collaboration between the agency, the Great Schools Partnership, and the field. And we're focusing on the development of sample performance tasks, and those are tasks that are drawing heavily from the work of the PLTs that Karen mentioned, in addition to also developing some new sample tasks. And then we're also developing some sets of scoring criteria so that schools can hopefully and teachers can hopefully assess student proficiency of, against the graduation proficiencies and performance indicators that were laid out in the proficiency-based graduation requirement work that was done last year that Tom mentioned. So it's all kind of a continuation of the proficiency-based grad requirement work that we did over the summer of 2014. And so where we are in the process right now is really concentrating on developing those sample tasks and scoring criteria, and then as we get to a place where those are fine-tuned and they're ready to share out with the field, we're hoping to pilot some of those tasks. And then at the same time, we're also designing a system around that to support the moderated scoring of those tasks and also the coupling of those common scoring tasks with tasks that are developed locally, so that ideally, the assessment of proficiency of a student's understanding of transferable skills would include common tasks and also tasks that were developed at the local level in that student's classroom. So we're in the process, as I said, of working on the tasks and the rubrics now, but then we anticipate in the future that we're going to be diving more into what that moderated scoring system is going to look like, what the online resources that are going to support the scoring system are going to look like, and how the online components that we're working on for the Vermont Transferable Skills Assessment System are going to link to our existing website, so that all the pieces will hopefully fit together relatively seamlessly.
Excellent.
Yeah, next slide, please. Thank you. These are some examples of some of the more systemic tasks that we're in the process of working on, and I think that we're really looking at ramping up a lot of this work over the summer into next year. The Great Schools Partnership is in the process of identifying some possible online solutions for us to use when we're thinking about how we want to share these tasks out, how we want to share scoring criteria out, how we want to make exemplars available to the field, and possibly make the work, make locally developed work part of the system and so other schools can have access to the work that's really being done effectively by their peers. And then I think that we are, if you look at the last bullet, their communication with Vermont schools and citizens about the project, this is something that we are just diving into now, but that we're very, very much prioritizing. I think that we see that communicating out what this is, how it can be useful, and how it can be used as a tool, even if you don't, even if a school doesn't choose to fully dive into this model, that's a very critical part of making this work. And so we're going to be having conversations about that, I'm sure, for a long time, but we're starting that work in earnest, I think, in the next couple of weeks. And that's going to be more agency-based. The development of the online training programs and the online systems are going to be done with agency collaboration, but we're getting a lot of support from the Great Schools Partnership in those efforts. Next slide, please. And then these are the, this is the element of the work in progress that we've been doing more of to date. I think that when we've been involving educators from the state in this work, it's really been so far largely around the development of these tasks and the development of these scoring criteria, the kind of work that's really going to impact classroom practice potentially and support it. So this has been some very exciting stuff, and we've been having monthly meetings where we've been bringing in groups of teachers for the most part, but also curriculum leaders in the state, and have really been diving into developing tasks and scoring criteria with the assistance of agency staff as well. And so this is going to continue, I'm anticipating for the next year or so at least. Right now, we've been working with three of the five transferable skills that are in the proficiency-based grad requirements, and we're planning on starting on the remaining two in the fall of next year.
Last slide, and this will respond to Peter's question. So EQS requires that secondary schools develop proficiency-based graduation requirements. We've put out a model that goes from K-12 in terms of identifying key standards and indicators of proficiency against those standards across that grade continuum, but it's really at the secondary level where those graduation requirements kick in. And that responsibility resides with the local secondary school board. So we are not saying that everybody has to look the same. What we are saying is that everybody has to include these pieces identified in EQS. And if you want to adopt the model we put out there, great. If you want to adapt it, if you want to start from scratch, but it would appear that in many cases, schools and districts are adopting or adapting in minor ways. Give you an example of the adoption that's going on in some places. In the southwestern part of the state, there are nine ESUs who are working together collaboratively coming out of the PBL series to identify commonalities in their transition to a proficiency-based system, and they have already agreed to simply adopt the transferable skills as we've put them out there. So that is happening in places. Just, yeah.
What about the content, though? So if they're adopting the transferable skills, what about the content? Because I know, like, even in my school, we had different departments handling it differently. So my department, we're looking at what the state provided. Math just made up their own, science made up their own, and some didn't realize when we talked about you have to be based on standards, and they were just going off of common core. They weren't looking off of frameworks. So a lot of it was all skill, no content. So just wondering if the transferable skills are something everybody's coming together on, what about the content areas? And are you seeing similar adoption of the state recommendations?
No. I don't think we're seeing a similar level of simply adopting. The framework of standards around math is the common core math.
Right, but for other subject areas.
Yeah. So I expect that's going to differ from school to school, much more than the transferable skills may differ. In a lot of cases, in the transferable skills, a lot of schools already had something in place that they may have had a different label for it, but it contained essentially the same elements, or they may have had to add one more new element that didn't have before. So I think for a lot of places, that was an easy transition. I think it's going to be a little more challenging in the content areas because there's a lot of ownership around that. To make that transition to the proficiency-based approach to content against the standards, our argument has been, in this context, that the transferable skills are the overarching umbrella. Content is aligned with those transferable skills. For every transferable skill, there undoubtedly multiple content areas align with those. For every content area, alignment with multiple transferable skills. And what we're arguing is that the transferable skills will be acquired and demonstrated by students through interaction with content, and that's what the work Chris was describing as trying to accomplish.
And I think one of the healthy but evolving conversations is, going back to Act 153 when it came into statute, is that the curriculum in special education and transportation and other functions, you know, aggregate at the supervisory union level. So it really is, you know, this is the early stages, this will be years of maturing and developing, to the point where the curriculum will be coordinated more and more across an SUSD type of approach, so that that will get addressed, but it's going to take time to have those conversations and develop and evolve. Chris?
And what about, I mean, my, just my concern is the students that move from SD and SU constantly. I mean, I have one student, she's been in twenty different schools. And so how would this affect, like, that is just my huge concern, the students that are so vulnerable to begin with, that then they're going to schools like, well, we have a different set of criteria here, so maybe you can't graduate. Like, so I'm just worried about lack of consistency and moving between supervisory and school, and if that conversation has been had, how to mitigate, mitigate that for students that are at risk to begin with.
Well, that has been true.
Well, I know, that's why, and it's like, does this change it, or just, I mean, does that actually make it better for them, or status quo?
I don't think we know the answer to that yet. My hope is that through the personalized learning plan process, that we'll move more toward a direction where there's more consistency. And certainly the example of what's happening in the southwestern part of the state, they recognize what you're talking about, and they want to make sure that as students transition, at least among those schools and districts, that there is greater consistency. So I think we'll see improvement over time in that regard, but it's not something that we can dictate. Although it's not unusual to hear school personnel and leaders ask us, simply tell us what to do, but we can't do that in many of these cases, is what we're talking about.
Again, though, that I think that, I think it's been fairly easy to develop, to adopt graduation requirements based on the old standards, because it basically told you what the minimum had to be. I think this is a more thoughtful discussion about what does proficiency look like in developing those graduation standards. So it won't be the same.
Peter?
Two questions. One, Great Schools Partnership, they must be, are we a sort of, are they using us as a tester or whatever? Are they sharing this with other states? Because, of course, their reach is broader than just Vermont. That's the first question. The second question is about where does PLPs fit into all this?
PLPs, as mentioned in a number of slides there, are the management of the proficiency progressions of individual students. That's how the personalization occurs as students progress through those standards and their attainment of those standards is measured. What we're doing with the PBL series over the seven-month period is a blueprint of what Great Schools Partnership has awarded for the Gates Grant for the five-year, five-state proficiency-based implementation. We just accelerated it and brought that blueprint into Vermont. So moving forward, we would hope to run a second cohort next year in a modified PBL series, and also we're in discussions now about what do we do to support this first cohort moving forward once they've had this learning? What do we need to dig into next to support their further implementation? So I think it certainly is the blueprint that the five states were pursuing. We jumped out first, and theoretically, we'd be the first state at scale on proficiency-based implementation in the country, probably. Bill?
That's perfectly then to a couple of questions here is, who has done this at scale? And the answer is, no one. And so this raises any number of questions in terms of logistics and capacity, because this is a very huge undertaking. And when you were talking about scoring, that's going to set up a new set of concerns. For anybody who was around when Rick Mills was commissioner and we had the portfolio project, and we just had piles and piles of portfolios stacked to the ceilings in every room that you could possibly get them in, is, it was a management problem of pretty big proportions, and the technical problem was a reliability question, even with just a four-point scale. And when you had the subjective thing, and you could count, if somebody gave a four and another gave a three, it was still a hit. But what happened was that reduced everything to a two-point scale, and the reliability just fell apart. And I don't know how to phrase this, but I guess is, have you given these kinds of implementation issues thought?
I think that's why it's in the local assessment system, and it's not part of our statewide accountability.
Yeah, I got that. It still doesn't mean that the problem doesn't exist.
I mean, I can speak to that from someone in the field dealing with this, and I think you're going to start getting a lot of pushback because there's not, you're not getting a lot of, like, some people are getting time to go and spend professional development doing this, but a lot of us are not, and we get an hour every two weeks to be like, okay, write your proficiencies. That was one task for one department meeting, and going through, it's like, well, where do we even start? Like, it causes a lot of debate and not a lot of time being put into it, and there's definitely a lot of pushback. I run a policy group at school where teachers, we get together and talk about educational policy, and this is something that they're really concerned about. And they're not the ones being sent on these, you're getting people that are definitely all for it and that are just gung-ho and wanting that. And not that teachers don't want to move towards this, but it's not being done very thoughtfully. There's no extra money for this, it's just in your free time, it's in faculty meetings when you already have a full plate of, here's this other thing now we're working on. There's very few professional development days for educators. So to come up with a school proficiencies, I mean, even in my school, we're trying to work on this, but so different, we can't even agree on what it means to be proficient.
Within your school?
Within the school, even within the department. So even within one indicator, they're so hard to even try to go through. And so I think it's very, there's a lot of tension around that in the field, and just to be aware of that. That's at the local, like you were saying, Rebecca, this is where the local implementation is happening, but you might start getting more pushback. It's not that teachers don't want to move towards proficiencies, there's a lot of questions unanswered. Greeting systems, we kind of, we've added, we haven't changed anything else, we're just adding one more thing in, instead of looking at a systems change. It's just adding one more.
Rebecca?
When you look back at Dan Koritz's articles, I mean, what they, what, Dan Koritz wrote the studies, he actually did the study of the evaluation, the calibration of the portfolios, and what he said was that as a state-level accountability tool, they're useless, but what they're good for is promoting teacher collaboration and professional conversation around learning. And if your teachers can't agree on what proficiency is, I would say that's exactly where they need to start.
Right.
And that's part of why we have an incoherent education system. So I think that's a really powerful conversation. And this goes back to what our theory of action is about how we improve the field, and we can't, we cannot, we shouldn't even pretend that we're going to hold the hand and touch every teacher and make our schools better that way. That's not realistic. We have forty percent less in general fund than we did seven years ago. That's not what the agency can do. We can't touch teachers. We can touch systems and create context for conversations to happen around, and local innovation. And I think that was the intent behind having SU-level teams, and this team will never touch every teacher, that's not going to happen. But what is important is that that kind of conversation is happening, because every time you have that conversation and you share that work locally with other professionals, what you're doing is internally calibrating on your own expectations. So I think, I think that's the reality. I think the paradox of EQS is it's incredibly, and whenever someone tells me that they've done it, I know they don't understand it, because if you actually think about it, if you actually think about it, it's an incredibly complicated and overwhelming change, and it's not going to happen in five or ten years in some places.
I think the good news is it's not, it's not a high-stakes proposition here.
That's the key.
That it's about transforming systemic change for learning opportunities for all students. It will take time, everybody's, you know... It will take time, everybody's, you know, should feel comfortable having those tough conversations, because there's no clock ticking, there's no, we're not using it as an accountability measure to go out and say, you haven't done this fast enough, quick enough, or good enough.
I think there is though, because it does say there's a date that it has to be done by. And I think that is actually causing a lot of the anxiety, because there's that pressure thinking, well, our seventh graders now, they have to graduate proficiencies and how are we going to transform this by then? So I think maybe that perception though, in the field, is not shared, that it's not in time.
There's a healthy tension between some pressure and support of time and resources that will occur there. I think as Amy said in her last presentation, you know, we know it's not going to be 100%. We know it's not going to be, you know, the ideal picture. But we will be closer three years from now than we are today. And five years from now, we'll be even closer. It's an evolving system development.
I think it's hard for teachers, because we want the best for our students and we don't want to think that someone's being shortchanged.
That's where the healthy piece is.
And that's where the healthy piece, but it is just, when we do it, we want to do it right. You know, we want to make sure our kids, because in three years, somebody's a freshman, they're graduating, you know? And so like, that's where I think, it's not even the pressure coming from that side, but that pressure of not wanting to, not letting your kids down, you know, and doing something that's not.
I think that's a great approach to it.
But perhaps the biggest gift you could give your kids is to help them understand continuous improvement and that that applies, because no one's going to hit it out of the park their first time through. And when I look, actually, and I visit a lot of classrooms and I look at teaching, I think some of the, the power of some of this is it's going to make some of the teaching and the learning public. And it's a chance to see how some teacher in some other fifth-grade classroom in some other corner of the state is trying to grapple with the issues. Because I think we're pretty isolated sometimes and we actually need to get out and look at what the people are doing. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much, John, we wish you well. We need funding, we know where to come.
Absolutely.
I think that's real smart not to try to do that on a state level.
Yes.
Couldn't happen.
Thank you.
Mary?
We'll move on to item K, let kids grow, and I'm going to call on Stacy.
Hey. So I have the pleasure of introducing Ms. Robyn Brindon McGuire from Let's Grow Kids. And we're trying to get Robyn here, we keep running into various complications, but we finally have you here, I'm so excited. Robyn's the campaign director for Let's Grow Kids and has served in a variety of roles across the state with the Vermont State Employees Association, also is the coordinator, was the coordinator for the Early Childhood Alliance. I asked her to come because I feel like one of the things that we've been touching on a lot, you know, everything from Cameron Edwards being here earlier, from pre-K rulemaking, hearing Rebecca said earlier, you know, a phrase about as a state, we need, when are we going to have the conversation about are we going to support kids' needs from age zero? The state board, a lot of times we say K-12, K-12, but really with the passage of Act 166, we're really, pre-K-12 is our purview and pre-K-16 sometimes when we have the post-secondary folks here. And I thought, if you don't already know, there's so much activity going on across the state in early childhood education, and Robyn's the person to tell us about it. So I wanted to make sure that we were all informed and could be good advocates as well as knowledgeable.
Great, thank you for the introduction, I brought these packets.
Oh, good, lots of handouts, thank you.
Well, thank you for having me, I appreciate it. I thought maybe the best way to approach our presentation today about the campaign is to give you an overview about the campaign, what our goals are, and also give you some kind of specific, what we view to be specific linkages to your work and your strategic plan and just inviting conversation as we move forward. Let's Grow Kids is a public education campaign that aims to raise awareness about early childhood development. And we're a privately funded campaign that's funded by some early childhood funders who have long provided direct grants to services here in the state and have, over time, grown to want to see more systemic change and therefore are investing in a lot of different important projects, including Let's Grow Kids. The reason why we launched the campaign is because we know that we could be doing better by Vermont's children. We look at some of our indicators, like the K readiness indicators or third-grade reading level indicators. We know that there's a real opportunity for us to have children better prepared before they enter into school. We also, before we launched the campaign, we did some survey research to get a better understanding about how Vermonters thought about early childhood, really about whether or not they supported young children in the state, what they understood about early childhood development, and what were some important issues to them. And one of the top issues that was of concern for Vermonters is that our children are not entering kindergarten as prepared as what we would like for them to enter kindergarten in. Additionally, there was some disconnect, however, in terms of people's understanding of, developmentally, what is happening between the ages zero to three and between the ages of three to five. Between three to five, there's a little bit more of an understanding and it makes sense, because as a dialogue, we talk a little bit more, especially around pre-K, we talk about ages three and four. But generally, people are unaware of what the opportunity is when we're talking about ages zero to three. So the campaign and our work is very comprehensive, so I'm going to try to distill it for you today, which is that there are pretty much four major components. One is our communication. So we are trying to reach as many Vermonters across the state through a strategic communications plan that includes paid media, earned media, social media, and our owned media. So we are, we are developing our own database and we are reaching out to Vermonters and educating them about early childhood development. The second major piece of the campaign is outreach. We are working in communities to go to farmers markets, county fairs, hosting community forums about early childhood development, any place where we're able to connect with community members to educate them about early childhood development. That is where we aim to be. The linkage to that in our communications is that ultimately, we want to have 10,000 Vermonters supporting our campaign. And the way that we identify those supporters is by asking them to sign a pledge. And once they join the campaign, we ask them to take all types of actions to help educate their colleagues, their neighbors, and their friends, and so on and so forth. Today, we have 4,300 people in our database. So we're continuing to cultivate a deeper understanding about why we need to think about ages zero to three and zero to five more critically. The other piece is, as Stacy mentioned, there has been a huge amount that has occurred in the state with the development of the Vermont Early Childhood Framework and its associated action plan, as well as the award for the Race to the Top Early Learning Challenge Grant and the pre-K expansion. The way that we fit into that overall work is working with our partners to figure out how can we, what's the best strategy for, for changing some of the outcomes for young children? Within the Early Childhood Action Plan, one of the top priorities is to create more accessible early learning, high-quality experiences for young children in the state. And one of those settings includes high-quality, affordable childcare. So we're working with our partners to achieve that. And the last piece of the campaign is really research. So anything that we, we put out in terms of our communications has been researched through surveys or focus groups. And really what we're trying to do is figure out what is the best way and most effective way to talk to Vermonters about early education and young children and their development. So I'm not hanging out in the office with my colleagues just making up the messages as we go forward. In connection to, I was, had the opportunity to review the strategic plan. And in connection to goal one that is listed, ensure that Vermont's public education system operates in the framework of high expectations for every learner and ensure that this is, there is equity and opportunity for all. I think it's very clear from our perspective that we would like for all children to be considered learners. Children are born learning from day one. And the science has really developed over the years that we have a better understanding, a greater understanding about early childhood development. And that the years zero to five, there's such rapid brain development that impacts cognitive development and social-emotional development, all of which are interconnected, so you can't really develop one without the other. And conversely, you can't negatively impact one without negatively impacting the other. So when we think about children who are struggling in the public education system, socially-emotionally, we can think creatively about what the opportunity is early on to mitigate some of those social and emotional challenges that students are facing. The second piece is that when we talk about equity, ensuring that all children have access to quality early learning experiences is very critical. We know that not all children are having access to quality early learning experiences. And there's been tremendous work that has been done in the state to elevate quality in our childcare centers and also home providers. There's a lot of work that needs to be done around accessibility and affordability and so on and so forth. But when we think about creating learning experiences and opportunity, that's where we see a direct connection. For many people who have either learned about early childhood development and brain development, maybe you've forgotten it at some point, or perhaps it's new information, what I highlighted here is that the science really supports early learning and demonstrates that every second, there are 700 new neural connections that are formed in an infant or in a toddler. And the way that those neural connections are strengthened are through interactions with the adult caregivers in their lives. And it's through those positive, healthy interactions with the adult caregivers in their lives that those formations are developed and strengthened. And if they don't have those healthy interactions, then what can happen is that those connections are not formed. And in fact, they disappear. And that has some negative impact in terms of their brain development. The other piece that I just want to highlight is a concept called toxic stress. Toxic stress is what scientists use to describe when a child is living in a situation where perhaps they're experiencing neglect or abuse or some ongoing challenges that are detrimental to their development. It can take one care provider to help mitigate that toxic stress. They act as a buffer to that toxic stress. And oftentimes, that can be, you know, that could be a grandparent, that could be a childcare provider, and so on and so forth. So when we look at early childhood development, we really need to think about the opportunity that we have during those early years to create systems to support all of our children. The second piece for goal number two, ensure that the public education system is stable, efficient, and responsive to changes in ever-changing population needs, economic and 21st century issues. Fundamentally, times have changed. I think people hearken back, you know, for folks who were maybe raised in the 50s and think about what their early childhood was like, and it's just dramatically different compared to children today. We know that 72% of Vermont's children under the age of six have all of their parents in the workforce. So our workforce is highly reliant on childcare and out-of-home care for their children, which means that there's a setting in which we have the opportunity to provide and support for the healthy development of young children, while also providing workforce support so that parents can go to work with peace of mind, understanding that their children are in a, in a place where their healthy development is being encouraged. The other piece is that we know that there has been some studies, longitudinal studies over the course of the years that have indicated that the return on investment is substantial. And those studies range from $5 for every $1 invested to $16 for every dollar invested. So we know that there's some opportunity, although appreciating that there's competing demands for, on the state's budget, especially in this climate. But as we think about long-term support for Vermont's economic growth and also mitigating some of our costs elsewhere in the state's budget, early childhood is proving to be a good investment for states. I included in here a graph for you, just to quickly highlight, by James Heckman. It's widely known as the Heckman graph that indicates what the rate of return on investment in human capital is. And you can see where it points out prenatal programs and programs targeting towards the earliest years, how much the, the rate of return is, is much higher than much later in life. All of that is to say, it is, it costs less. It's not that we should write people off after the age of five, but it's certainly less costly and more effective to invest earlier on to lay a more solid foundation. The last piece, just to highlight for you, is, one of the things that Let's Grow Kids is doing is we're supporting the formation of a Blue Ribbon Commission that will research the cost and how to finance high-quality, affordable childcare in the state. Language was, I provided it for you in the folder. You can review the language at your leisure. But essentially, our hope is that the commission is formed in that we are able to elevate this conversation and really think about how we are going to better fund a system that's so important to our state's workforce and also important to children's healthy development, and that it provides a report to the state for, something for us to work towards. And just the last piece, I included in the folder just a couple of handouts just to help you see the type of information that we're distributing in communities and also including in our communications. There is a bookmark that we distributed, 12,000 of them, to local libraries across the state. And they distributed those to their readers who checked out books. We also included a piece that we call our kindergarten readiness piece. And what it illustrates on one side is the types of activities that help healthy development of young children, so that people can understand that play is development, that singing and reading and cooing and hugging and all of those good things are healthy development for young children. And it connects to some of the domains that we consider for kindergarten readiness. And then there are other pieces concerning business development and the brain development. We utilize these in our outreach. That K readiness piece, we distributed about 5,000 pieces at Town Meeting Day across the state. And we continue to utilize it in a lot of different ways. Just wanted to highlight those as some examples of what our work is. So that's, that's my, that's my wrap. I hope it was comprehensive enough and I welcome any questions.
Thank you, Robyn. Are there questions, Robyn? Stacy?
So something we were, we touched on earlier today in our conversation about the school consolidation conversation is where, is there governance, thank you, the governance conversation. Where, you know, where's their, where's the role of, let's say, A H S and the A R N? How do these organizations collaborate, maybe potentially to support our students? I feel like early childhood, maybe, feels like Let's Grow Kids and Building Bright Futures, that there's, you feel like there's collaborations from those agencies already in this area? And maybe is there anything that we could look towards for guidance in that department?
Well, Building Bright Futures and Let's Grow Kids and I'm trying to hearken back, we're able to actually participate in the Vermont Business Round Tables, Green Mountain Territorial. We were invited, the Building Bright Futures actually was one of the co-conveners for that event. And then we were invited to participate as well. So I think there has been some collaboration and we're certainly paying attention to what's happening as well as Building Bright Futures. We understand and appreciate that it's a, it's a heavy lift for the state. And figuring out where the opportunities are is critical, but also the timing is critical. So we're just paying attention. I know that some of the reports have indicated that we should think about the continuum, as you stated earlier, to be zero to 22. Certainly, we would welcome that and believe that that needs to be the case. That the pre-K bill, Act, Act, I should say, Act 166 is certainly a step in the right direction. But we also know that developmentally, so much more is happening younger, earlier in years. So we need to invest in the systems.
Thank you, oh, excuse me.
Is the, are the funders, the same funders that started the pre-Ks in the public schools? The same consortium of people?
Vermont Permanent, yes. Permanent Fund for Vermont's Children that supported the Vermont Preschool Collaborative was involved as well.
Are they still doing that?
Yes, they are.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good work.
Ready to proceed.
Can I take a five-minute break?
Sure.
On item L, waiver requests for CE SU. As I understand it, the board has authority to make such waivers under section, under 16 VSA 261D. For anyone that's curious about that. And what I'd like to, for a process, we'll call on Vaughn for a short overview. And then we'll go and let the gentleman explain their point of view on this. Vaughn?
Vaughn, Office Agency of Education. The secretary is recommending approval of four waiver requests from the Chittin East Supervisor Union Board. They're basically designed to create an effective supervisor reunion board in a modified unified district. Creature we are seeing for the first time that's relatively unique and for which a great many statutes and regulations don't apply especially well. As the chairman noted, the waivers all rely on 16 VSA Section 261D. To live up to my well-earned reputation for brevity, I won't read it aloud, but you have the-
Remove that last comment from the record.
That means you can read the whole thing.
All of the waivers relate to Chapter 7 and topics you have the authority to waive if you believe it's in the interest of the state. As I said, they are all designed to make the supervisory union board function. They are also all consistent with, in most cases, or in several cases, duplicating the provisions in the Articles of Agreement that you approved before five of the six districts chose to form the modified unified union school district. So-
Can you just clarify one thing? And it is, it is brief. This paper says 262, and you just said 26, somebody said 261D.
It should be 261D. Did I say 262?
No, this paper says, according to-
I said 262.
261D.
D as in dog. Probably a typo somewhere.
Well, under terms of, on number one, Terms of Office, it talks about 16 VSA 261-
Oh. Each of the waivers has a citation specifically. What I was giving is your authority to grant the waivers. I wasn't talking yet about the waivers. I imagine Mr. Leopold will be the one to go through that.
With that great introduction.
Thank you. My name is Christopher Leopold. I'm legal counsel for the Chittin East Supervisor Union, and we modify Mount Mansfield Union School District. With me today is John Malaza, who's the chair of the Modified Union School District. And on behalf of the Supervisor Union, we are requesting that the state board exercise its statutory authority and grant us a waiver relative to several statutory provisions related to the operation of the Unified Union. As Vaughn indicated, last August, when you approved the Articles of Agreement, there were several provisions in the Articles that specifically related to the provisions we're asking you to waive in state statute today, so they're consistent. I'll review them briefly. There's four provisions. The first is the Terms of Office for school directors and the date of the annual meeting. State statute establishes that the annual meeting is to occur no later than April 15, and that the term of office for each school director on the Supervisory Union Board is one year. The Supervisor Union felt that in the interests of efficiency, one, they want to have the statute followed relative to the election by the Huntington Board of their one representative to have that be a one-year term. But since the remaining members of the Supervisory Union Board would be the members of the Modified Union Board, it makes no sense to elect them for one-year terms. So we're asking that those terms be coterminous or coeval, meaning that they follow each other. The second requirement relative to the date of the annual meeting, we're asking that the date of the annual meeting be permitted to be moved to June 15. The board believed that that was necessary and appropriate relative to having receipt of all the auditor reports, the various school reports that they'd like to have, and have some breathing room from the time of the annual meetings of the member districts. The second area where we're requesting a waiver is relative to the quorum requirements for the Supervisory Union Board that are set forth in Section 263 of Title 16. And what we're requesting is that a majority of the Supervisory Union Board members constitute a quorum. That's the same requirement as it would be for any other school district in the state. It's different than it is for a Supervisory Union. For a Supervisory Union, the typical quorum requirement, unless there's been a waiver, is that it has to be a majority of each of the districts and a majority of the board members. We're proposing to keep the majority of the board members, do away with the requirement that it be a majority of the districts. In this case, there's only two districts, so a majority really constitutes a complete attendance. And the board felt that that was not efficient and effective for the operations of the Supervisory Union to do that. The board of the Modified Union represents all of the districts and includes representatives from Huntington as well, so there is representation within that framework. The third area that we're requesting a waiver from in terms of state statutes is relative to the voting requirements. Section 264 of Title 16 provides that a majority vote of the directors present is how a Supervisory Union takes action. We're requesting, and the Articles of Agreement provide, that the voting is based on weighted voting. And the weighted voting is that is proportional to the population of the entire SU and the Modified Union, and that is that each Huntington representative would have 2/3 of a vote, and the representatives of each of the other districts within the board would have one Huntington would have the equivalent of two full votes by the weighted voting methodology. And as I indicated, that is directly proportional to the, to the population within the Supervisory Union and the composition of the Modified Union Board.
Can you say that again? Huntington would be how weighted?
It would be weighted so that they would receive, each would receive 2/3 of a vote.
Okay, so 2/3 and 2/3 is 4/3, which is not two votes.
So there's three members.
Oh, there's three members.
Three members.
Okay, there were three members. Okay, sorry. Sorry?
That's okay.
Hold the math.
Lastly, the final provision that we're requesting a waiver from is Section 266, which is the composition of the board itself. And last summer, in the Articles of Agreement, there was a specific article that was drafted that established a new composition that you approved. And so we're now coming back and asking you to approve a waiver specifically related to that Article of Agreement. And the composition of the board would be that the Supervisory Union Board would consist of 16 members, the 15 members who are elected representatives of the Modified Union Board, representing all of the communities in the Supervisory Union. And it would also include a single representative elected by the Huntington School Board to specifically represent the Huntington Town School Board in that process. So it'd be a 16-member board, 15 of whom would consist from the Modified Union Board representing the other five communities plus Huntington, and then Huntington would have a separate representative that the Town School Board elects.
So you've, a quick question. What I hear you saying in all these four requests, that there's no disagreement within the area on these requests? Everyone has bought into it?
So two things. I think first, several of these requests directly relate to the Articles of Agreement. Huntington did vote not to join the Modified Union. So you can draw whatever opinion relative to that vote regarding the Union. I cannot represent to you that the Chittin East Board voted unanimously in favor of this. It was approved by a majority vote of all the members present and voting when they put in the, in the waiver request.
So can you just go back to that? So the waiver request, the majority of that, was it the same board?
It's the current Chittin East Supervisor Union.
It's the current board that voted in the majority?
It's the current board that voted in the majority to approve this.
And is this mud board in place yet?
The mud board is in place, but it's not operating the Supervisory Union.
Until July 1st?
Until July 1, correct.
Okay.
It's, when you were talking about the 2/3 votes and count, I could just see myself presiding over a close vote in a situation like that.
Point 66. Hold your hand up.
There, you know, the statutes, as you're aware, permits within union school districts for there to be weighted voting right now to, as one mechanism to achieve proportional representation for, for school districts. So it's a possibility that exists under current law.
Yes. Mark?
Okay, so right now, Chris, what we essentially have is 18 board members on the SU?
Yes.
And we're going to drop it to 16. That was by the article. Okay.
Correct.
I've got the makeup. Okay.
Peter?
I'm intrigued to be here, listening to you. I was on the Ed Committee when this all transpired, and it's fascinating to see how this has developed when this was still, was this was floated. First, we had you in mind.
Right.
And, and here we are, fine-tuning it. I'm just wondering, it seemed to have worked, and, and it's an example of how we possibly can tailor situations like this, that there isn't one template that's going to fit all, and we have to be adaptive as we move along on this governance trail. And I wonder if you have any insiders, thoughts on that?
I agree with you wholeheartedly on that, and that, I'm reading Vaughn's little note here. We are breaking new ground with this, and there are some challenges that are coming along, but along with those challenges are coming lots of opportunities with them. And, and, you know, this request is just an example of, please let us proceed with, it's a challenge of let us proceed with capturing those opportunities that come if you grant us these waivers. But the board is functioning quite well. We're moving along. Methodically is the word I like to use there, because you now have 15 board members coming from separate places and trying to learn one another's styles, as their, what their goals are, and that. And in addition to, we had to wait till December in order to be actually formed, and then we had a short window in which to put a budget together out there. So we haven't quite gotten to where we want to be, but overall, I really like what I'm seeing from the board, the thoughtfulness that's going out there with the goals in mind, that trying to do what, as we all say, is best for kids in there. But this is, I said, the opportunities and the windows that are opening now with this, this new board, us all together, one, one family, one community and stuff. And we still view Huntington as part of that, that community and that, and we listen to them and respect the position that they're in. We hope that they will change their mind at some point and become part of us, but that's up to their community to decide.
If, this is a bit off the subject, and so if you don't want to answer it, you don't have to. If the legislation that's going through the Vermont Legislature now on school governance, I'm not even going to give it a number or say what version I'm talking about, that was to, to pass in some form, how would that affect what you are doing here so successfully?
I'm not sure that it would change what we're doing. And that, I think, I think we're ahead of the curve, so to speak, in that. And as long as people in the field of education continue to let us take advantage of the opportunities that we've, that are being created, that we've created, then I don't see any real roadblocks out there.
There's a, I'm told that there's a hearing tomorrow night in the Senate Education Committee. If you're free, it might be a good idea for you to go and talk about how this has worked and how you've improved the quality of education, and then maybe you would persuade others.
I would be willing to do that. I believe our vice chair, Andrew Pond, might be, I don't know if some of you are familiar-
Two minutes to get all that said.
But they got 18 board members.
Oh, that's true.
It's going to be up there.
Any other questions on this?
I just want to follow up, and I think you'd probably agree, I was on a red study committee, and there was a member of the study committee that was on the Hazen Board, and he said, when he makes a vote, he's not thinking about his kids from Hazen, he's thinking about all the kids and what's in the best interest of all kids, which I think is a very salient point, and that's, that's where you are now.
Well, that's where we are now. Well, we had that with our, the Mount Mansfield Union School Board, which oversaw the high school and then the two middle schools. And the two middle schools had, of course, all the communities coming into it, and then, of course, the high school has everyone. And they've always said that they've, they've always felt, every board member on there, whether they were from Jericho, Richmond, Huntington, Underhill, Polton, they always felt that every student in there was a student in their community. They never thought of themselves as a Jericho or Richmond or whatever. And that's been a blessing as we've formed this new board, to have that mindset continue now with that, as we think of us all as one. And we really don't talk about Richmond or Underhill or Jericho anymore about that. We really talk about Chittin East Supervisor Union.
Great.
Or the, you know, the triple M.
Good news.
Any weaknesses or downsides to what you're proposing here? Or I could say, do you anticipate any unanticipated consequences? What's the downside, or do you see any?
I don't see any downsides to this, and I certainly would turn to Chris in that, I don't believe there's, there's any of that. I assume we may even be coming back to you as we find other challenges and that as we move forward. I-
I don't know how else they could fundamentally work without these revisions. And I, once it became clear that, that a modified union might be formed, the study committee really began to look closely at, so how to, you know, what happens to the Supervisory Union, and how do we try to make the Supervisory Union work? And so they spent a fair amount of time in the, in the process of the study committee looking at those issues, and I think they've come up with a fairly innovative approach to it. Notwithstanding the chairperson's comments regarding the school governance, I do think that if Supervisory Unions continue to exist in Vermont, and we continue as a state to increase- increase their responsibilities and their authority, and consequently their financial impact on education, I do think this issue about representation is one that the legislature is going to have to grapple with, because I think a challenge might ultimately be raised about these large Supervisor Unions making decisions and not having proportional representation on them. And so I think that's an issue in the offing, depending on what happens with school governance.
Sean Marie?
I couldn't agree more. I think that, first, I just would like to ask you, when you say a majority, a majority of 18, so what was the majority? No, because it's the 18-member Board.
I honestly don't know. I don't know whether you recall, John.
You said the vote was a majority of the 18-member Board.
Right. Oh.
So was it, you know, 10-8, or...
Gee, I don't really know if we ever ran into a situation where we had to do that.
Okay, so going forward, my, I would caution the historic perspective. So you've got 15 members now, and in three or four or five years, you may not have but one or two, and because every, every SU or SD is so different, and the rules are so expansively different for each individual situation, that there needs to be a storyteller, like in the old days, to say how we got here. So I have a question about the budgets. So you used to have however many, how many districts were within that mud before it was a mud? I don't have last year's paperwork.
We had six elementary school, so you'd have, each have a budget, and then you'd have...
You had six...
Six elementary, but then there was the Mount Mansfield School Board, so that's the seventh budget, then you'd have this...
The SU.
The SU, which would be an eighth budget. So we had eight budgets.
So when you asked for the extension till June, I'm assuming that you're still going to have the school year end on June 30, and your audit's done for all those schools except Huntington. I'm assuming you're going to have an audit for the mud and an audit for Huntington, right? Is that how it's going to work? Because you're going to have one budget for the whole...
Right.
And if Huntington had come in, you would have created an SD, is that correct? You would have created a Supervisory District?
Would have been a unified, what's called a unified district.
Unified Union District, like the high schools?
And the Supervisor Union would have ceased to exist.
It would have been a red, which, if I, if there's a distinction between a red and an SD, I can't find it.
Okay, that's, okay. So the Chair of this Board, I'm assuming when you say Huntington, you have one Huntington member that's at point 66, that's representing the rebel out here, and then you have two point 66s on the 15-member Board?
Correct.
So the Chair will, if you're ever in a situation where you really have to pay attention to the weighted votes, somebody's going to have to be doing the math at all these meetings, right?
Correct.
Well, do it with each meeting when the vote actually gets recorded in the minutes.
All right, is there a motion on these requests for four waivers?
So moved.
Moved by Peter Pelz to approve the four waiver requests. Mark seconds it. Is there more discussion? If not, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it unanimously, and congratulations, and move forward, and get out there and brag about it once in a while.
It's the longest motion I've seen since I've been here in two years, too.
What's that, Mark?
The longest motion I've seen since I've been here in two years, page and a half.
It is the longest green sheet I've ever written.
Thank you for coming today.
Thank you, Phil.
Thanks.
All right, last item of the day is to get an update of where we are on the Legislative Committee in terms of the public hearing tomorrow night.
I don't think it specifically said...
Oh, yes. Yes, I'm sorry. It's been suggested that we're, we'll take up Item M at the May meeting, and I would entertain a motion to table it until that meeting.
So I would make a motion to table Item M till May.
Sean Marie has moved. Bonnie has seconded. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no, and the ayes have it. Now we'll go on to the legislative update.
Okay, so we came up with some framework of just ideas and get some feedback, so then I could turn this into a written piece, but we started with the positives, things that we, you know, positive then negative. So that it's moving in the right direction, moving towards educational systems. Positive was the idea of including town and people, positive creating environment of combining education and social services, and combining of thinking of something different that's positive. We went with the, instead of you've lost your way, you've lost your focus.
Your mind.
Yeah, your mind. That you've lost your way is a little bit aggressive. So you've lost your focus, too many waivers, contradictory, so it's just, it's lost the focus. The idea is to go back to that focus of creating more opportunities for kids, for both education and social services, and not revising, but re-envisioning education. We have, we want to communicate to think outside of geography, that we are small towns but need to come together as a larger community of Vermont, and thinking about consolidated education systems, that we need to have leaders to deal with the challenges that we're going to be facing as a state. We need a cohesive system, but most of all, going back to students, that this is, the idea is that we're supposed to be really thinking about the kids, and what can we do to make them thrive? And then go back to, and actually, Mark brought this up, so if you want, I want to keep a few of these for tomorrow night, if it's all possible, but if you want, just take one. But go back to what came out of the Green Mountain Initiative, to go back to what was the goal, and I guess this came out of, this was a picture that Mark had taken, this idea, this was the very closing, go back to this idea of pre-K through 12 systems through government, and to really go back to what this was, and it's kind of interesting when you look on the side marks, and it talks about how the AOE and Health and Student Services are overlap, yet distinct, coming up with common value for Vermont students, but thinking about student-centered systems with accountability built on sustainable funding. That was a goal going in, and I don't want to say we've lost our way, but we've lost our focus, and we need to go back to this focus that we came up with at the beginning, because right now, we're not really hearing anything about student-centered. We're not hearing anything about accountability. The governance and that big structure holding everybody in is now disjointed. It's not one system. So going, the message being going back to what was envisioned, and then moving forward. Thoughts?
I think that's, that last point you're making is very important. I mean, what, from my point of view, what this conversation's been about from the very beginning, whenever the beginning began, was about, was about school inequities, that we just were not providing the same education for every kid in Vermont. And now what the debate is about is how do we preserve this archaic, don't call it archaic, this historical...
Complex.
...system that goes back to the 1890s, and it's, and it's, you know, people are talking about it for preserving our historic Vermont, preserving, you know, Vermont's communities. But that's not the discussion. The discussion is about how do we get inequitable educational opportunities for all our kids? You've got a school of 50 or 20 kids, they ain't getting the same education as somebody in a larger school. And I, that's, back to your point of refocusing the conversation. That's what I tried to do when I was last before the Senate Ed, but obviously, they didn't listen, but, and you're going to hear a lot of that tomorrow night.
I know, yeah.
So you and Mark are going tomorrow night? Is that the deal?
Mm-hmm. Now, Mark, are you bringing your hats?
I'll try and come up with four or five different hats, sure.
No, I don't want drama. That's the thing, like, I don't want to be in the drama.
I would try to, I would try to testify near the end, and let all this other stuff come out first.
Do they generally listen to everyone that's in the room?
Yes.
They listen, but the...
No, what I mean is, they don't cut the list off.
They allow people to speak.
Everybody gets two minutes if you sign.
Yeah, yeah, well, they might cut it off after two hours, I mean, they've announced five to seven, right?
Right.
So they might cut it off at seven. But the result of, you know, is this going to change anything tomorrow night? Nope.
Right.
It's a waste of time.
Oh, but you should do it.
Oh, yeah.
Thanks for that. It's a waste of time.
No, what I'm, what I'm telling you is, don't walk out, don't be disappointed when you walk out of there tomorrow evening that you didn't turn the tide.
No, but I think it's important that the State Board comes out and doesn't stay silent, and maybe, if it doesn't change the tide, maybe it changes a couple of people's thinking.
Right. I mean, it still has to get voted out of the Senate anyways.
Maybe, maybe this strategy is to delay so long it doesn't get out.
Ever.
I mean, remember, it's got to go to two more committees once it gets out of Senate Ed.
I don't think so.
And they're pretty busy, those other two committees. Sorry, Bill.
I, Ann Cummings has said she's going to do something, so I think something's going to happen, but I don't know what.
But if she keeps delaying it, and there's not time in Senate Finance and Appropriations, she's done what, she's accomplished what she needed to, but yet she may have messed up the timing of it. I understand.
I can get more copies of the suit, if people want to hold on to them.
I've written that one. I was adding to it.
Oh, is there anything else you want to add to it?
I'll just put equity in.
Any other thoughts?
I really liked your use of the word re-envision. I think that's a powerful way to explain it. I wondered also about maybe the word remo, remodel, because...
Redesign.
To me, yeah, when you're thinking of like remodeling a house, you're not tearing everything down and starting from scratch, you know? You assess the situation, do we have some floors that are really nice and we'd like to keep? Maybe the roof is leaking, and that's what we need to remodel. So it's like, you're adding to this existing structure, and it's, and it's never going to be the same for every house, so remodel.
I like that statement. Remodel. It's just a nice, it's not terribly, it's not terribly threatening.
That's what I was going to say. It seems less scary.
I think the other thing, too, on the same lines as Morgan, is the, it appears the focus has, you know, when you tell people they've lost their focus or they've lost their way, it's more, I mean, it's very...
Over there or here?
You're talking to five people, so it's not like you're talking to a room full or an audience.
Right. Well, it's, we felt, because the mantra before was they've lost their way, and we're like, we didn't, oh, I was just saying, I think that's way too strong.
Well, it appears you've lost your way. It appears you've lost your focus, or the media's...
Yeah, appears.
...lost its focus.
Well, the reality is, some folks have not lost their focus.
Why don't we, can I make a suggestion? Why don't someone move to adjournment?
Move for adjournment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Turn the camera off, and let's continue the conversation.